Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Commission meeting for May 15, 2024. And I want to thank you all for being here. We have a lot of really very fun things on the agenda and some swearing in and some proclamations and some presentations and it's, you know, this is, this is all about Oregon City and the positive changes that we're making in our community. So we'll convene the meeting and I will ask for the roll call and make note for the record that Commissioner O'Donnell is excused tonight.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Adam Marl?
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff?
I am present. So would you please join me in doing the flag salute this evening? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everyone. So on our agenda tonight, under item 3A, we have an oath of office for a new Oregon City Police Officer, and I will turn it over to Chief Davis for the introduction.
Mayor Commission, thanks. We're excited to have Ben Labus here to swear in. He's our newest officer, so if he can come up front.
Official hands.
So Ben grew up in Gresham and went to San Barbara High School. Ben does a lot of volunteering, including 10 seasons of coaching for high school basketball and is the president of Youth League. Prior to starting with us, Ben worked in computer software and was a reserve officer with the Dallas Police Department. Ben started with us on April 22 and goes to the academy on May 27. Tonight, joining him is his wife McKenzie, his four-
Raise your hand, McKenzie.
His four children, Jackson, Neva, Nora, and Theo.
It's raising hands.
His parents.
Karen.
And then many friends, family, and mentors. So I'll turn it over to you.
Test.
Is it test?
No.
It's on, right?
If there's a green light on, then yes.
The green light is on.
Test.
Got it? Is it? Give me.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I would like to ask you to raise your right hand, and you will be ready to solemnly swear. So I say your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemn- Ben Labus, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
And the Constitution of the State of Oregon.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
I will abide by the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the department's rules and regulations.
And the department's rules and regulations.
While faithfully performing my duties.
While faithfully performing my duties.
As a police officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
As a police officer for Oregon City, Oregon.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So while he's doing that, I'm just going to say a few things. I have known Ben for a couple of years. We are workout buddies at Orange Theory. He goes there, so yay, Orange Theory. And he's always been very encouraging to me, even when I look like I'm about ready to die. Sometimes I look over and he looks like he's about ready to die. But, you know, that's the whole part of the organization and the program, and it's a very, very comprehensive and there's a lot of camaraderie there. So whether you're, you know, you're a type A person or you just are there for exercise and just kind of hanging out with a bunch of really awesome people, and that's how I met them. So I'm glad to have you join our police force. We occasionally talk about city stuff, but when we're there, we're really, we're working out. We're not messing around. So. All right. Next on our agenda, we have item 3B, Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Proclamation. And I'd like to ask Commissioner Mike Mitchell if he would read that, please? All right.
I was reading that.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. Sorry, I'm sorry. I asked Commissioner Smith to read that. So you're going to read the water safety. Commissioner Smith, would you please read that?
I just, first of all, I want to say, one of our favorite things on the commission is to swear in new police officers.
Absolutely.
So we're always excited about that. The Oregon City Police Department has been part of my family my entire life, and some member of my family has been part of the Oregon City Police Department all of my life. So this is a very important, important proclamation that we do every year. Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation which designated May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which that date falls as Police Week. And whereas there are approximately 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Oregon City Police Department. And whereas since the first recorded death in 19, or excuse me, in 1791, more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and died or have been killed in the line of duty, including two of our own officers, Officer George J. Hanlon and Officer Robert Lipke. And whereas the members of the Oregon City Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and the freedoms which we have been guaranteed by the Constitution to every American citizen, and where it is important that people throughout our country know and understand the problems, duties, responsibilities of their police departments, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and/or intimidation. And whereas the Oregon City Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides vital public service.
Now therefore, I Denise C. McGriff, Mayor of the City of Oregon City, along with the City Commission, hereby call upon the people of Oregon City to observe the week of May 12 through 18, 2024, as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an inevitable enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon the people of Oregon City to observe, actually today, Wednesday, May 15, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of the peace officers who have, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duty. These officers have been lost but will never be forgotten. The community will forever grateful. We ask for a moment of silence as we remember Oregon City's valuable public servants and pray for the healing and hope for the future. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand the 15th day of May, 2024. Let's observe a moment of silence. Thank you so much. I'd also like to add to what Commissioner Smith said, that I am very grateful for having had many years working at 320 Warner Millie Road, right across the counter from Oregon City Police Department, and I count many of the officers as friends and colleagues. And it's just great to be in a community where you know who's out there protecting you, supporting you, and how much we support and care for all of you. And it's nice when I drive by and I get a wave back or I wave at them, and it's just, I just think we're so fortunate in Oregon City to have a police department that is, that is so well-regarded, not only in our state but in our community, and have so many people work in the department, all the way from the gals that come to the front counter, to our code compliance officers, to everybody in the back, Forty, Val, and everyone else. We are very, very fortunate to have the people that we have that serve and protect Oregon City. So thank you very much for everybody in the back there in the room. And, you know, as they say on my favorite TV show, be safe out there, and we'll see you on the road. Thank you. So next, Commissioner Mitchell?
Proclamation for Water Safety Month, month of May, and International Water Safety Day, May 15. Whereas the City of Oregon City recognizes the vital role that swimming and aquatic-related activities contribute to good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all people. And whereas the City of Oregon City recognizes the vital importance of water as a valuable resource and acknowledges the inherent risks associated with aquatic environments. And whereas every citizen deserves the opportunity to enjoy water-related activities safely, whether swimming, boating, or simply being nearbodies of water. And whereas the month of May presents an opportune time to heighten awareness of water safety, as warmer weather often leads to increased recreational water activities. And whereas nationally, an estimated 11 people die each day from unintentional drowning, and drowning is the second-leading cause of deaths among children ages 1 to 14. And whereas promoting responsible aquatic practices and equipping individuals with the necessary knowledge and skills can significantly reduce the incidence of drownings and other water-related incidents. And whereas by fostering a culture of water safety, we reaffirm our commitment to protecting the lives and well-being of our citizens, especially our youth, who are particularly vulnerable to water hazards. And whereas the City of Oregon City is dedicated to collaborating with local organizations, schools, and community members to implement effective water safety initiatives and programs. And whereas by declaring May as Water Safety Month, we pledge to prioritize water safety awareness and education, empowering individuals to make informed decisions and take appropriate precautions while engaging in water activities.
Now, therefore, I Denise C. McGriff, Mayor of the City of Oregon City, along with the City Commission, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Water Safety Month, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to join in this observance. And I will sign this proclamation dated today, the 15th of May, 2024. And I will also add that shout out to all of our swim instructors at the Oregon City Pool. I think it's really important that everyone, especially our children, learn how to swim. You never know when you're going to need that skill, and it is invaluable. And I hope we're able to, through our great staff, be able to figure out some more time for swim lessons. I know that's something that staff has mentioned, and so has Director Reed. So thank you to everybody at the Oregon City Swimming Pool and all the pools all over the place for helping people learn how to swim. Commissioner Marl?
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage in the United States was celebrated beginning in 1978 and was made into a month-long event in 1992. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a month to celebrate and pay tribute to the vast diversity of languages, religions, and cultural traditions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders that strengthen the fabric of American society. And whereas the month of May was selected as it honors the immigration of the first Japanese residence to the United States in 1843, additionally, May also marks the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in 1869, constructed by the labor of mostly Chinese immigrants. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have lived and worked in Oregon for more than 200 years, contributing to the state's rich history, economy, and culture. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander history in Oregon is marked by a struggle for freedom, equity, and justice, and prevailing over the adversity of exclusion, persecution, incarceration, and disparities. Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have helped advance Oregon's prosperity and have a longstanding history of making esteemed, significant cultural and economic and community contributions. And whereas the vibrant history and diverse cultures of Oregon's Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are here to be honored and respected as a central part of our state, county, and city story and shared with all Oregonians.
Now therefore, I Denise C. McGriff, Mayor of the City of Oregon City, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as American, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and encourage everyone to commemorate this important occasion in recognition of the numerous and amazing contributions made by the Asian American and Pacific Islander community locally, nationally, and globally. And I will sign this proclamation on the 15th of May, 2024. I was going to say that there is a program that's going to be coming up at the Wilsonville Library about the Chinese and their contributions to that, but I will find that before the end of the meeting and put that on the record. So next, we have a proclamation, creating a Cayuse Five Day of Remembrance. And whereas the City of Oregon City Commissioners, Mayor, and staff have the utmost respect for all indigenous people of the lands that are now called Oregon. And whereas in recognition of the losses and injustices imposed by untribal people, lands, and resources as a result of overland migration, introduced diseases, and subsequent warfare. And whereas such incidences led to the deaths of Marcus Whitman and others in the Walla Walla Valley in 1847. And whereas five Cayuse men were charged, sentenced, and executed following an unjust trial resulting in their hanging in Oregon City on June 3, 1850. And whereas these tragic events of 1850 have led an indelible imprint on the lives of today's Cayuse people. And whereas the graves of those five hung men are now at an unknown location at this time. And whereas the City of Oregon City recognizes the urgency of locating the whereabouts of these men's remains for repatriation and ceremonial reburial in their homeland. And whereas the City of Oregon City, in partnership with the Confederated Tribes of the Umatilla Indian Reservation, is dedicated to honoring the memory of the men known today as the Cayuse Five through a tribute project at the McLaughlin Promenade. And whereas the City of Oregon City recognizes the importance of commemorating the Cayuse Five and promoting understanding, healing, and reconciliation among all residents. Now I therefore, Denise C. McGriff, Mayor of Oregon City, do hereby proclaim June 3, 2024, as Cayuse Five Day of Remembrance in Oregon City, and encourage everyone to observe this day with solemn reflection in honor of the memory of the Cayuse Five and to commit to building a more just and equitable community for all. And I will sign this proclamation today, the 15th of May, 2024. And do we have them on the call?
Yes, we do, on Zoom.
So I'd like to introduce Jennifer Engum, who's the cultural anthropologist for the Confederated Tribes of the Umatilla Indian Reservation. Hi, Jennifer, welcome. Thank you for joining us. Would you like to say anything? Thank you so much. Is Bobby here with us? So we will make sure that you get copies of that, or actually the original of that. But we thank you for joining us today, and we look forward to celebrating with you on June the 3. Thank you so much for joining us. Right. So next on our agenda is item 4, and we have Tim, is it Ward? Come on up. Who's a neighbor of mine. And yours, and yours. Absolutely. Or you can sit over there. So just your name and city of residence for the record.
My name is Tim Ward. I'm a lifetime resident of Oregon City.
That didn't look like a U. Okay, sorry about that, because I'm trying to read your handwriting.
That's okay. Everybody gets it wrong.
Is it, it's W-A-U-D?
It's correct.
Okay, all right.
Like a Wadum gum.
I'm going to fix that. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm excited for this opportunity to talk about a new event here in Oregon City, and it kind of segues off of this proclamation of May being Aquatic Safety Awareness. I represent Oregon Master Swimming, which is part of United States Master Swimming, our national governing body. I'm also a professional swim coach here in Oregon City. I'm here with Race Director Daniella Klaas, who's also a professional coach. We have started the inaugural Clackamas Cove Cruise Open Water Swim, which is going to take place on June 15 at the Clackamas Cove, behind the Oregon City Shopping Center here in Oregon City. The event should bring adults from all over the Pacific Northwest to swim in this amazing venue. It's been a lifelong dream of mine to have a race event in the Clackamas Cove, and it's coming to fruition. So we have a 1.2-mile swim and a 2.4-mile swim, which is entertaining to those folks that do triathlons, as well as folks who enjoy natural water swimming or open water swimming. We're excited to showcase Oregon City and show them the beauty of our Three Rivers area, and hope to bring a lot of people in. We're looking for volunteers. If anybody is willing to come down and help us out, if you're a kayaker or something of that nature, we have plenty of room for volunteers, and it's going to be an exciting event. I think a lot of people will kind of drive by the cove there and kind of go, what's going on here? And I think it'll bring a little bit of attention to the Clackamas Cove.
Are you guys planning on testing the water before you all jump in there?
I have been swimming in the-
I just have to ask.
I've been swimming in the Clackamas Cove for over 20 years, and my experience is that around the beginning of June, the water's about 60 degrees, which is fine to get in without a wetsuit. For those of us that are a little bit brave, some people will be wearing wetsuits just to be prepared for hypothermia. But it's a very popular place. Some people even start swimming there in early March when it's about 41 degrees, without wetsuits.
And did you know this is an old event that you're bringing back? Did you know this is not the first time this event has happened?
We have been working with Patrick Boland-
Yeah.
-who hosted the Clackamas Cove Triathlon.
Yeah.
Nice thing about our event, we don't have to block any streets.
Right.
You use a lot of water.
Exactly. It's very cool.
It's a little bit easier logistically to put on, but he's been a great liaison to us to help put off this-
Yeah, very cool.
-put off this event.
Thank you so much. So I don't think you got my question about whether you-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I asked you whether you were going to test the water. I don't mean test it for cold. Test it for-
For E. coli and other things.
Yes, all of that.
That's a great question. The cove actually does get a little dicey, probably about the beginning of August, maybe late July, but in the very beginning in June, it's very safe.
Okay, good. Good. Up, 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 up. If you would like to speak, come on up. You can't speak from the audience. Sorry.
The USGS actually publishes water safety, including flow rate, bacteria contamination levels, and this is all publicly accessible. And they begin testing that particular beach because it's so widely accessible to the public. They've already begun testing it, and you can actually see that the water quality is fantastic. So come out and swim.
Well-
It is definitely tested.
Good, because I have to be honest, the Clackamas Cove scares me. But that's okay. But I remember when I was working for the city, when our city recorder, Jean Elliott, submitted the winning name. We didn't know it was her, and so it was changed from Parkers Lagoon, which nobody liked, to Clackamas Cove, and she, she did that. So it's, I always think about her when I, when I think about Clackamas Cove. So thank you very much and have a fantastic event. If I'm around, I will come by. That is a busy week, busy month, as it's Rose Festival Month, and there's groups in Oregon City doing Rose Festival type things. So, good luck. Yes, sir.
It's, it's too late for this year, but you might want to be aware, if you have a successful event this year, we do have a community grant, a community event grant program that you might want to look into for next year. Thank you.
We would welcome you to apply.
Have any other public comments? Signed up?
No. No.
I'd ask the Commission if they'd like Bobby Connor.
Absolutely. I thought that was-
Confederate tribes of the-
I thought that was her, because I recognized her from our field trip last year, so-
Indian Reservation.
Welcome. Thank you so much for coming and joining us.
Can I just, real quick, say that it has been such a pleasure to work with Bobby and her team and Jennifer and Tara over at the Confederate Tribes of the Umatilla Indian Reservation with our staff. I think it's been educational, enlightening, humbling. It's been an absolutely wonderful experience. And so I just want to say thank you and so excited about the relationships we've built and the project that we're going to complete here very shortly. So I just wanted to say that before. And thank you for coming tonight. I know it was kind of short, short notice, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Commissioners and officers, I, I just want to say, the privilege is mutual, and the benefit is mutual, and the goal was mutual. And that's really the key to the success of this project. We've been greeted by very professional staff here on your behalf in Oregon City. And at every time we've had a delay, it is not because of your staff, and it has not been because of their lack of enthusiasm for this project. And we're enormously grateful for such a willing partner. It is not very often that our Confederated Tribes of Umatilla has a partner who comes to the table prepared to help finance the project. Typically, we get an invitation to join a project because they're looking for financing. So your largesse, your generosity, your spirit of hospitality has been exceptional, and we hope to continue working with you well into the future to achieve the goals that this project sets out. to achieve the goals that this project sets out. As you may be familiar with, our goal is to find the locations of the graves, if possible, of the five men hanged in 1850. And that would be the most successful fruition of this project well into the future. And it may not be in my lifetime, but I have every expectation that the next generations will continue this quest. And I thank you for your willingness to join us in this work and to be so welcoming to us on this project. Madam Mayor, this is the third mayor with whom we've had a conversation, but this is the, or fourth, actually. This is the fruition of the project at this point, and we're very grateful that you stayed the course. And the Confederated Tribes of Umatilla will be here on June 3rd to commemorate the Day of Remembrance of the five Cayuse men. And we look forward to continuing to work with you well beyond that, including Parks and Recreation Department as they maintain the site, and any assistance we can give them in that process. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have the proclamation for you. So Commissioner Mitchell, would you like to say anything? Would you like to say anything?
It's a wonderful project. It's recognition that's long overdue, and we appreciate your cooperation on it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morrow?
Well, I'll just say that we all talk about how Oregon City is an historic community, and I'm very grateful that we're finally getting to the point where, when we're talking about the historic nature of our community, we're talking about all of our histories, and this is an integral part of that. And we're so grateful for the partnership that we've been able to build and strengthen with the tribe, and we look forward to what lies ahead as well.
Interesting.
How do you put all that into words? Because there's so much that we all want to say. And I started in high school working at the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretative Center, and I thought I knew a lot about this town. I know a lot more about this town, but still, I know about this much. The history here is incredible. The last five or 10 years, I think a lot of us have been researching and focusing on the whole history of Oregon City and really understanding this place. And I think that this, well, going up on the bluff and seeing the groundbreaking finally after generations of talking about it, it means a lot to us. And for those of us that, you know, have been on the commission a short time or a long time, this is just as important to each of us. And the past mayors, even though they may not have accomplished the goal at that time, I hope they will all be there, or some of them are invited to be there. This is something our community has been wanting a long time, and I'm so glad that whatever happened to put the synergy in place to push it forward, which had to do a fair amount with some of us sitting here, I think, and staff, especially they've been working on this forever. I am so excited, so it's time to honor Oregon City's entire history, and we have a lot more work to do. So thank you so much for being here, and we look forward to seeing you in a couple weeks.
Yes, not very long. I will just footnote my comments and say that your staff has also been very kind and gracious to the University of Oregon Clark Honors College. Every time, we've now had three colloquia, three classes of students from the Honors College have invested over 7,000 hours in the research of the grave locations, and we're not done. We will continue to work with the University of Oregon on that. But I just want to say, it was not specific to this project, and the city staff has been absolutely wonderful in welcoming not only the students, but helping us with the lay of the land and meeting facilities and other ways to follow the pursuits of that research. So it's been an extraordinary experience. Thank you.
Like Commissioner Smith, I too dabble in a lot of history. And just to make more connections, we are, our theme of our Juneteenth event next month has to do with some of Oregon City's forgotten history. And it ties together with this about people who, in the 1850s, were marginalized. And we are going to be bringing this out. I'll be participating in a panel. But I think back to the, when I first got on the commission, Mayor Lyle Smith asked me, could I attend an event with some of the members of your tribe? And it was Mr. Menthorn came, and I had the privilege of sitting next to him when we finished doing the ceremony up on the bluff. We went to lunch together, and we sat there, and he chatted with me. And let's just say, he imparted some wisdom. And we were hoping that we would be able to get this to a point to where he would be able to be here, but he will be here. He is here. He will be there with all of us on June 3rd. And I just also want to thank you again for being so welcoming to all of us when Commissioner Morrow, Commissioner Smith, and myself came out with our Finance Director, Matt Zuck, to visit with you. And I got to see the museum, the Tomoslick Museum, again, for about the sixth or seventh time. But I always try to stop when I'm through there. And you all have done a wonderful job. And I was grateful when we had our sesquicentennial that there was a great deal of recognition about the tribal museums, because they tell the rest of the story that has been left out for many of people of color in this state and in the nation. So continue the work, continue to tell the story, continue to enlighten the rest of us who need some enlightenment so that we know the story. And I think it's just wonderful that, again, that this is coming to fruition, and I'm glad that we have this commission to work with you and the staff to make this happen.
Thank you.
And I will just come and give you this to take back with you. So much. We appreciate this, and we appreciate you so much.
Thank you very much. I'm honored.
We're very honored.
Thank you, Tony. I'll see you all very soon.
Absolutely, absolutely. Very soon. Thank you. Another quick shout out to our staff, Dante Prisadas, and obviously his director, John Lewis, and the city manager. Dante has really been working very hard on this project and making it happen. So on our agenda, we have some presentations, and I have to say, 5A happens to be one of... Well, they're all my favorite, but this is really a favorite for me. So we have on the agenda the presentation of the Ruth McBride Powers Preservation Award and the presentation. So Christina Robertson Gardner, please come on up. Do you do the intros, and then, Mr. Lehman, are you ready for the pictures?
Happy Preservation Month to the City Commission. I am here on behalf of the Historic Review Board to present two awards this evening of the Ruth Powers Preservation Award, which was started a while back to honor both people and projects that really resonate with the community as preservation projects. Ruth Powers was an amazing woman. For those who don't know, she single-handedly saved more territorial aged homes in Oregon than anybody else. We have a lot here in Oregon City, as well as other buildings within Clackamas County, but the Irmitinger House, the McCarver House, Rose Farm, the list goes on. The Ainsworth House were all saved by Ms. Powers, who just really saw how important it was to have the physical evidence of our story in Oregon City. So tonight, we have two great projects. We have the Gacklys and their preservation and rehabilitation of the Ely Store. On the top left, you'll see this 1907 false front building. This is what it did look like. Over time, it was remodeled, as they say. And the Gacklys, along with Islen Architects, really looked at how they could bring back... They couldn't quite bring it back to its original, but they did a pretty amazing job. And you'll see today the rehabilitation of this commercial building on Seventh Street. The second award is really a service award to honor, oh, sorry, a service award to honor all the work that Islen Architects, Jessica and Todd Islen, have done over the years, both historic projects as well as other projects within Oregon City. I created a slide just to put some of the projects that they worked on. It was really hard to fit all those photos in. These are historic projects that were reviewed by the Historic Review Board in the McLaughlin Conservation District, and many of them also won Preservation Award over the years. You have the Oddfellows Building. You have the two single-family homes that are now offices by the Gacklys on 15th Street. Infill project at 14th Street, thank you. Infill projects on 8th Street near Mike's Drive-In, as well as the rehabilitation of a 1920s duplex. The historic house in Park Place, which actually is not McLaughlin, as well as addition to a small, single-family home in Park Place. So these are all really great evidence of what the Historic Review Board said. And I want to read what they actually said as they made their nomination. To Islen Architects, their body of work can be seen throughout the city, and they consistently find elegant solutions that add value to the community and preserve historic buildings. So with this, we have two awards, and I will give these to the mayor.
Month, and the theme is still people saving places. And that's really what Oregon City is about in so many ways. And I've had the pleasure of working with Todd and Jessica over the years on many projects, and both of them have served on the Historic Review Board, which we are thankful for your service and your advice. And we continue to call upon them in many occasions for some unofficial advice about things that we need to look at in Oregon City. And I just appreciate everything that you and Jessica have done in this community that has made such a difference to the historic fabric of not only the McLaughlin neighborhood, but also the entire city. And when people come to Oregon City to see Oregon City, they get to see the real deal. They don't get to see something that's been redone, or kind of fake-looking, or trying to look old, because it already is here, and we've just tried to enhance it. I'm done yet?
No, we're done, Jenny. I believe in Oregon City.
Yep, yep.
Thinking of a better place.
Give me that, you can say a few words if you like.
I'm good. Thank you.
Last but not least, some folks that I had occasion to meet many, many years ago in Oregon City, and talked to Dave on many occasions about some of the interesting projects that he wanted to take on, and Vicky, too. And I just appreciate, the city appreciates all of your efforts. Bringing back those buildings on 14th Street was a labor of love and also money pit. But, you know, they look great now. And I think that taking on the Ely Store, like I said before the meeting, is that I had the picture of this building on my wall when I was at 321 Warner Millie Road, and I said, someday, somebody's going to see the value in this building, and they're going to fix it up, and they're going to bring it back to life. So it's just very exciting that you took this on, and we want to do whatever we can to help. And thank you so much for all of your very, very, very hard work on this. And I'll have to, when Dave gets back from his fishing, I'll have to ask him, well, what's next? Because I know that, I know it means there's a next project. I would be remiss if I didn't, I didn't, I didn't recognize all your own work and all these projects to mention. Or that, for you, I think, too, it's a labor of love. And I know, I feel the advice to do what you did, and I still do it. Oregon City has just been, you know, just a special place. And all the work in passing, Ruth McBride Powers, 1990, she was quite an amazing people. I think I said this last year, I had an opportunity to work with her. I've done enough research, so I did a presentation last week at the Hotel Home House, which she saved. One building that I've been able to happily document, not just in Oregon City, but as opposed to the ones that she saved. I like to tell people that she was a great woman. We've got a couple 1850s, and then we've got the Oddfellows Hall in Lake Oswego that's later than that, so. That one's not working? So anyway, she was amazing, and it's just really nice that we've named this award after her and keep that legacy going. So thank you to you and to the Planning Department staff and the whole Community Development Department, because it's a joint effort between building and planning and engineering to get all these things done. So thank you on behalf of the commission. All right, next, 5B, we have the 2023-2024 Youth Opiate Prevention Grant Program Process Update. And Chief Davis, would you please take that?
Yeah, Mayor, Commissioner, good evening. I'd like to call up Ann Hayes from Oregon City Together and her two very special guests. While they're coming up here, as you know, the Budget Committee and the commission approved, set aside earmarked money, up to $40,000 each biennium for youth opioid prevention. In the grant process, at the last process, the grant advertised, and Oregon City Together applied. And at the November 15, 2023 City Commission meeting, they were awarded $20,000. So I've been to one of their programs, which was just last month. It was very good, and I know the mayor's been to one of their programs, and she spoke at it. So I'm going to turn it over to Ann Hayes, and I'll let her introduce her very special guest tonight.
Do I need to press this, or no? Oh, good. It should be on end. Okay, thanks. I'm Ann Haynes with Oregon City Together. I will let you introduce yourself.
I'm Constance. I'm a student at Oregon City Service Learning Academy.
I'm Megan Jones. I'm the teacher that led the project at Oregon City Service Learning Academy.
We also have Brian Shaw with us back there, so just wanted to acknowledge his support as usual. First of all, thank you for, to the commission and the mayor and officers for being here and allowing us to show a little bit about what we've been going, what we've been doing with this wonderful grant that you guys gave us. This is a final outcome, sort of graphics that I put together. I also have a film. Did you guys also get that? Can we start with that? That would be awesome. Okay, great. This kind of wraps up everything about the program.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us as we shine a light on youth mental health. This is a program.
Respect is important in life because it shows a sense of understanding between two people and in more civil manner. I think respect would help me as an adult because it shows that I can work with people even if I don't like them, but that I cannot respect them.
So reasons why mental health is important is my cousin Timmy was struggling with mental health and suicides until he was nine. He passed away at age 47. How you know, like, people are either harming themselves or killing themselves is, like, they might give all their stuff away, they might be overly friendly and wanting to go, like, out with a good, like, a tribe with everybody, or, like, they just become more distant and less open.
When teens tend to cope with their mental health despite isolating themselves, healthy ways teens can cope with their mental health is by listening to music, drawing, or talking with a friend or trusting an adult.
Thank you. So also just wanted to kind of recap. We used this grant to increase protective factors and reduce risk factors for youth mental health, because we know that 74% of our 11th graders say that they are stressed out or anxious most of the time. And the percentages are a little bit lower for the younger group, but it's a distinct problem, and it, we know that those mental health issues can lead to experimenting with substances. So we really wanted to focus on those protective factors and reducing risk factors. And we do have the posters up here, and they're put up all over the city and in the schools and the water bottle stickers and everything. I hope people have seen them around town. The kids at Ochsler really wanted to, this is how they wanted to show their campaign, the four Rs, and they wanted to make sure that the elementary school kids got to see them, so we made sure to get these in the elementary schools also. So it's really effective when it's a peer-to-peer, you know, youth-led, as you guys know, campaign works better. So I wanted to ask Megan to give us a little bit about her perspective. She's the lead instructor at Ochsler who helped facilitate this program.
This is my third year working in Oregon City at high school, and I wasn't sure how this program was going to roll out at first, or how engaged the kids would be. But I had a number of about 45 to 50 freshmen and sophomores who worked through the entire project, and I saw kids who have been more engaged in this project than anything I have seen them do in school, and some of them admitted they haven't worked this hard since early elementary school. So it was probably my favorite comment from it was, a student who struggles with severe anxiety and is just starting to come to school since joining Ochsler. And they said, when we were creating the posters, they said, we should do more things like this. And I said, what do you mean, art? And they said, no, projects that are about us, that show adults care. So I think one thing that I would like to point out, I think this is true not just in Oregon City, I think it's really a culture-wide thing that needs to be addressed, is in some serious conversations we had with Nigel at the beginning, the students were very honest about adults not taking their mental health seriously, and also the fact that one of the big reasons for substance use, whatever that substance may be, is that there is less of a taboo around that often than there is about talking about mental health, which I think is both horrifying, but a place to enter the conversation.
Thank you, Megan.
As a student at Oregon City Service Learning Academy, I think it's really important for there to be mental health resources all around for teenagers, adults, and children who need it. As a student, I see other students abusing, like, abusing substances every day. And honestly, it does kind of hurt me a little bit to know that this is what people my age are doing. And I would really like to put a stop on that, especially around the use of fentanyl.
Thank you so much. So the outcomes graphic that we put together just with some recent numbers, you can see we had 45 to 50 students that were engaged with the program. I think when we wrote the grant, we said we hoped we would have eight. So we kind of blew that out of the water, which is great, so hopefully we can grow that next year. And then our media campaign on social media and website reach was reached over 100,000. The billboard is still up and will be up through the end of June, so that's over 600,000. And then we have 300 posters out and about, plastered all over the place, mostly in schools, but some public buildings. And then the other campaign outcome that we're sure we're going to get, but we're waiting on the results, so we did the pre-survey related to how the students were feeling with their mental health and anxiety and stress. And then we'll do the post-survey after their final training. They still have one more leadership training with Nigel Wrangham, so once they do that, then we'll do the post-survey, and we'll have those results after that. And I think that's really it. We're just really grateful for this campaign. It's been fun to have the kids involved, and I'm glad to hear that it's a small drop in the bucket, I think, of what, obviously what is needed, but it's a step in the right direction.
So Ann, for the people who may not have seen it, could you tell our listening audience where the billboard is so that they could pay attention to it?
Oh, for sure. It's in the, I think it's Active Water Sports parking lot, so that's the corner of 99 and 10th? Or is that 12th?
12.
12. Yep. But it's definitely inside their parking lot on that corner.
Right. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. And let me put in a quick plug. We are accepting applications for the Youth Advisory Commission, and we had one of the students from the school, Alex, who graduated, was our member. So we are, Adam and I are working on getting an appointment with the principal so that we can come back again and chat about this and see if there's any interest of any of the students joining. Thank you. So next on our agenda, we have the Oregon City Arts Commission Annual Report, and they have been very busy. Tima, are you going to give the report for the commission? So we have Staff Ann Griffin and the Chair, Tima Carlson. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Just make sure that the mic is pointed towards you.
Okay. Thank you for having us. We're excited to present for the first time since I've been on the committee. So we have a little presentation that we're going to be going over, and we'll be doing the slide changes, and then I'll be updating you on what we've accomplished, and at the end, we can do questions.
Vice Chair?
Is choir.
Just for the record.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll also say, Ann Griffin, I have the pleasure to be the staff liaison to the Arts Commission. Okay, the Oregon City Arts Commission was reinstated several years ago. We have a board of, I think, nine members that have one and two-year terms, ranging their experience as just community members or having experience in art. And let's see, these are the names of our members, again, having one or two-year terms. You may recognize some of the names. A lot of them are from the McLaughlin neighborhood, but business or nonprofit associates, artists, and other. Okay, so some of the accomplishments that were conducted, I feel like we skipped a slide, but that's okay. So we decided on a mission statement that was something that, being reinstated, we wanted to, you know, work together and create our own bylaws and goal of what the Arts Commission is, and reviewed some of the current mural application forms that were, again, reinstated as well. And let's see, in, what page are we? I'm going to use yours, sorry. Let's see, the bylaws, again, were approved. We did begin doing a process of deciding upon a banner that was along Malala Avenue that was kind of one of our first projects. And then prior to that time, the sculpture that's located along Seventh, near the 7-Eleven, was damaged, and it was our goal to get that repopulated with another sculpture. And we met with various arts organizations and approved a mural. We had a photo of that previously, that the Friends of the Library had accomplished with the giraffe and white rabbit, black ink, working with the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde. We also conducted a questionnaire mail, mailer that was sent out to the community, and the top choices were youth programs, music, murals, and art festivals. So previously, there was the banner that was shown along with the sculpture that was damaged. So in 2022, we also had, I believe it was at, it wasn't First City Celebration, but the Archbridge Celebration Anniversary, we did a Westland, Grand Ronde, and City of Oregon City mural collaboration that was completed and is in the library currently. Okay. And that is our missed sculpture. And then 2023 accomplishments, we, it looks like we reviewed the ideas for funding and a call for artists for the replacement of the sculpture. We did a work session in February. Our grant was announced with an April 18 deadline, and along with a call for artists. And we received many artists that were interested in helping us with collaborating on a new sculpture. Let's see. Okay. So we worked on the loo that's located adjacent to the tunnel, I'm sorry, the elevator, and was well-received by the community. And we also worked with one of our local artists, Kathy Rowe, in discovering where murals had been or had been painted over, and the conditions of the murals. And she did a great job of giving us pricing on repairs and whatnot. I believe it has been, is that correct? I shared it with Public Works, who gave us the initial inventory, but I don't believe we've given it to our city commissioner, so I'm happy to share that with you. I'm happy to share that with you. But she did a great job. I think there were maybe 10 different murals and/or sculptures that were around, either on Main Street or up in the McLaughlin neighborhood, and the, you know, conditions and the cost of repairing was very informative. We also did the Oregon City Arts Grants, and that consisted of a Juneteenth celebration, an Oregon City coloring book by Ms. Kathy Rowe, an open house of the Willamette Falls Studios, a porch fest that consisted within the neighborhood, McLaughlin neighborhood, which is occurring again soon thereafter. Party Factory did a mural in cow sculpture, again, by Kathy Rowe. Funding of the Man of La Mancha for the Clackamas Repertory Theater, and our Art Center soul flags was approved for five cultural events. That consisted of Lunar New Year, Middle Eastern and North African Festival, Tzanka, Hispanic Heritage Festival, and Diwali Festival. So 2023 was a very busy year for the arts in City of Oregon City. And what's coming up next? We're going to be installing the replacement sculpture for Seventh. We'll be having our meeting tomorrow to decide upon two choices. We had some of the commissioners visit the artist's location to discuss, along with McLaughlin neighborhood representatives, and we'll be deciding tomorrow. And then working with Public Works on placement, and if there's any changes that need to be made. We are trying to work with the Clackamas County Courthouse Committee to assist with art pieces that'll be located within the structure, and trying to be on their committee just to determine kind of what's going on and see if we can assist in any way. Trying to raise awareness of the arts in our community and about the Arts Commission. So we have been working on our website and social media, just to kind of get the word out about the Arts Commission being reinstated. And supporting the Oregon City Public Art Renovation Project that Ms. Kathy Rowe worked on. And then long-term, you know, we're working on having an increase of public art within the community, a goal ultimately for a community art center and a cultural center, and an Oregon City Art Walk. We're doing some similar things along Main Street, working with Doka, but we would like to kind of enlarge that to be community-wide. Any other questions? I want to thank Tima for summarizing a lot of hard work in a short report, and we have a lot of talent and talented people in our community, and it really is a pleasure to help them determine what kind of projects to tackle and how to spread and get increased number of folks in our community engaged.
Any comments, commissioners, questions? I'd like to put in a shameless plug for when we go through our next budget process to put in a little more money for the Arts Commission, so I'm putting that down on the record. I can see the management staff over there smirking, so I'm going, uh-oh. But I have been trying to But I have been trying to find out from county what they did with the fountain that was in Liberty Square, Liberty Plaza, because it's not there. And it's disconcerting. I don't know what the heck happened to it. It's been gone for about a year and a half now.
It stopped working. They tried to fix it, destroyed it, pulled it out of the plaza. I don't know if they saved it because there was big chunks cut out of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I mean, you showed a picture of it in your assessment. I said, exactly. And I asked one of the staff, I said, in maintenance and facilities, I said, where is that?
Well, not only that, all of the, all the glass pieces in Liberty Square that are broken that they never replaced.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think before we take it over, we better get them to fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's disconcerting because that was a nice little art piece there.
Yeah, yeah. And I know the cultural events that we had, we just completed the Ukrainian Spring Festival last weekend at Gardner Middle School, the collaboration that took place with Oregon City Community Ed, Parks and Rec, and the library was phenomenal. So we would love to do that again upcoming.
Okay, thank you so much. Keep up the good work.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the adoption of the agenda. And I understand Commissioner Mitchell, you would like to add something to put down under item nine?
Yes, just to be a very brief item, just an introduction to a letter that Commissioner O'Donnell and I would like have asked to be put on the agenda for our June 5 meeting for the commission to review and hopefully adopt. But this will just be an introduction to that.
Okay, so we'll move that to nine. And I know that we need to make a correction to the minutes of, is it the minutes of the Seventh? I think I had them on the, we're talking about a correction regarding Winter New Year. It's supposed to be Lunar New Year. And then, I would like to also say that we're going to defer item seven I. That's gonna be on a subsequent agenda, so that's gonna be removed at this time. And I would like to just briefly pull seven C off the agenda. I'd like to have a couple of questions I have. So barring that, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda with the pulling seven I and seven C.
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda except for item seven C and seven I with the corrections to the February 7 minutes as noted.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded?
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Commissioner O'Donnell, excuse me.
Excuse me. Commissioner Frank, Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Sorry. How you got me goofed up?
Let's start over.
Let's start over.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So I'll just briefly ask my question to Director Lewis. So we've had seven C, we've had a number of items on our agenda regarding this. And every time I have this question because I get concerned about the exemption to noise ordinances, particularly surrounding residential areas. I know there's not a lot of residential houses near this, but they are adjacent. And noise carries at night. So what is the contractor going to be doing to minimize the amount of noisy noise that is going to occur with this? I agree that they shouldn't be working during the day because I go up and down the hill many times a day and they've been out in the street with their stuff. And they have some kind of, what I would call cone, not cones, but those candlesticks that really don't tell you that you're not supposed to be over there. They need to do a better job of marking out that area. They had a, they had a track hoe yesterday and one today when I came up first thing this morning and I said, oh, that's not good.
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. So on this one specifically, I didn't, I didn't talk to staff about that, but we've been, we've heard this message about doing work after hours and the concern, trying to limit that, trying to put in provisions that help minimize that impact from the commission in other instances as well. So the staff has heard that and we try to pay attention to that. I don't have specifics on this, but typically what we would do is things like saw cutting pavement, for instance, where you can run that saw either earlier in the evening, even though it's after hours, or you run it during the day to, you know, while you can still allow traffic to go through. There are those things like when you're actually kind of open cutting and you got your excavator out there that there's no way to keep that quiet. And yet, we know that because of the width of the curb, the amount of space behind the curb, you can't get an excavator in there. You can't do your excavation, can't do any of that while allowing traffic to come through there. And it's also not an operation that can be done quietly. So we'll provide earplugs for the neighborhood. That's one option we could implement that we probably haven't. But yeah, it's a balance and that's why this is designed to come to you. I think, I think that's what the intention was, was to bring these. But you're right, you're having to make a decision that's gonna have an impact on residents.
Well, I think that the people next door, it was the same property owner, who are the renters in that house. The wall is there, it's, it's, you know, they can kiss that, that wall. And they have been subject to all of that for the last year and a half. And then it would stop and start and stop and start. You know, it started again and then it stopped and now they're starting again. And I, you know, anything we can do to minimize the noise because it just, people are working and they have to listen to that and try to go to sleep, it's just, it's tough.
It is tough. And I guess the only other thing I'd add to that is if it was the neighbor or anybody else that was doing that, they would have the same opportunity and we would give them that same, you know, we'd go through this effort to ask for that. So it's, you know, if the tables were turned, they would have that same right.
It also is, it makes a little bit of difference too, is that now that that tall building is there, that sound is just bouncing. I mean, it's not like it's dispersing, it's bouncing off that, those walls and the school. And it's just, you know, it's right there. So I just, I'm not gonna vote against this. I'm just saying that, that we need to look, we need to look at all of these, obviously. And I know staff does on a case-by-case basis because it depends on what's surrounding. I've mentioned to the city manager about the stuff going on with the courthouse. I drove down High, you know, Highfield Court about a week ago and sat there for about 20 minutes outside of my car, listening to that noise going on during the day for that construction. And then there were the, there's the bright lights that are on all night. And I'm thinking, you know, that is just, it's kind of unreasonable to have to deal with some of that, particularly, you know, adjacent to all that residential areas. So I mean, I'll support this. I just, I just want to, you know, I know the staff is very cognizant that, that, you know, we have concerns about livability. And I understand that they have to, they have to do work, but they need to be very conscientious about what they're doing and the noise that they're making. Because I know both those, those houses that are right nearby, those are people that go into work every day.
Well, I appreciate the comments. I'll make sure my staff and the quill is, oh, where did quill go?
It's you.
We will make sure that our staff is, is, you know, thinking about those issues every time. I know there's been other instances that we've, you know, we've talked about it and the fact that they want to do it at night. And we said, no, we need to do this during the day. There's a way to make it happen. So we scrutinize these pretty hard. But this one here, that's a very narrow section of Seventh, there's no, there's no...
So maybe we can ask these contractors, because I remember the last time we did this, the contractor was here and he told us exactly what they were gonna, you know, he was aware of the situation, he was aware of the fact that there was gonna be noise and this is what he was going to do to minimize that for the people adjacent. And I certainly appreciated that. Because then when I get those kind of comments to me from the community, I can say, well, the developer said he's gonna do this, this, and this. And if you have any issues, then you need to call, you know, our code enforcement. But this is what they're proposing to do. So I think it's just something that we should be asking them, you know, what are you thinking about doing besides what you guys and the Public Works Department are gonna require them to do? Like you said, the saw cutting. Because yeah, I don't think I'd want to hear that at midnight, you know, and the cement. It's very loud.
It is.
So I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 24-15. So move. Is there a second?
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Adam Marl.
Aye.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, let's move on to, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so let's move on to general business. So let's take the new item 79A. Commissioner Mitchell, Mayor, excuse me, city manager, whatever.
I get a vote. So first, we're gonna do the Oregon City 20-year Facility Master Plan? Is that what you'd like to do?
I know, from Commissioner Mitchell's request.
Okay.
Very briefly, as I think you all know, there is a group of individuals, business, businesses, river-related businesses that are, that has formed called the River Opportunities and Assets Task Force, recognizing the fact that there seem to be a number of projects along both sides of the river that are coming together with what Westland's Urban Renewal Plan on their side of the river, with the walkway that we talked about earlier this evening, you know, the Eighth Street Dock. How could the John Storm Dock be used as more of a tourism attraction? And that group has reached out to a number of different cities, including Westland and Gladstone and Candy, along with all, some of the private entities, as I've mentioned, and nonprofit groups. And what Commissioner O'Donnell and I have asked is we'll be bringing back on June 5th, basically a letter of support for that group's activities and recognizing the importance of coordination between all these groups that are doing different things in a format very similar to the letter that we signed related to tolling, that had, you know, Oregon City logo, Westland. It doesn't commit, well, you'll see it, but it doesn't commit to specific actions. It commits to cooperation and communication between all of those groups. And we'll be bringing that on June 5th for review and hopefully approval to put our city's logo on that. That's it.
Any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
No, thank you.
I guess I would just say, just as a note of caution, not so much concern, I don't want this group to get out in front of the commission. And I also have concerns about the fact that this is a, it's a private group. If it's something that we are looking at possibly endorsing, then I think it needs to be legitimate in some way. I'm not sure I'm ready to do that right now. But I just get concerned that we're being asked to maybe do something, maybe do nothing. And then there's some accountability that goes along with it. So again, you know, I'm thinking about possible unintended consequences. And this group doesn't have any authority or legitimacy other than it's a group of people that want to get together. So I want to make sure that the community, when we have our further discussion, that they understand that this is a concept. It's not a group that we have said, okay, now we're gonna create this river task force and we're gonna appoint people and do all this stuff. We may get there eventually, but we may not. So I just want you, I'm sure you've already thought of all these things. But I think that there is, it's worthy to have a discussion about it. I guess I would like to have, when we get there, have a little bit more due diligence about what this is, what this means, what are other, what are the other jurisdictions talking about? So in a way, it's not, to me, similar to tolling because the tolling letter came from an authorized group that was sanctioned. There were representatives of each jurisdiction. We knew who was doing what. We had our representatives there. So again, I just want to, just want to say that, you know, I support the concept and I definitely support having a discussion about it. All right, so now let's talk about the 20-year Facility Master Plan. So we'll have this on our agenda on the 5th. Talk about some more.
All right, thank you. So before you tonight is the proposed draft for the 20-year Facilities Master Plan. This project and the scope looked at 17 facilities owned by the city and identified a baseline existing condition and recommendations on investment into those facilities or investments into master plans or discussions about future funding related to each of those facilities. And, you know, as no surprise, you know, when we've discussed during the work sessions, you know, we really do see a couple priority projects that, whether that be the pool, the end of the Oregon Trail Museum and property as really the two facilities in need of, you know, immediate discussion and determination on what to do and how to do that. The remainder of the facilities, you know, we're actually in a pretty good place in terms of capacity, location, you know, one of the, I think, purchasing First Street really created a lot of capacity for the city from square footage space for staffing. But realizing, you know, that site was smaller, but, you know, that's been moved, that's been improved by the purchase of additional property for future reservoir that can serve to store some of those larger items. And it really will allow us to, you know, have a discussion about what to do with the Public Works facility on Center Street moving forward. And really, that's contingent upon relocating what we call a decant facility, the ability to de-water some of our equipment when we're picking up, doing street swimming, street sweeping or clearing out stormwater basins and whatnot. So there's some immediate steps that can be taken, both from, you know, larger investments in terms of clearing the ability to determine what the final outcome of a property is, such as Center Street. And then a lot of identified maintenance and security upgrades, some of which are currently ongoing, such as consolidation of card access and video from a safety standpoint. So, you know, I think this is a good first step in terms of really looking at all of our facilities together and, you know, what that roadmap looks like moving forward. You know, I would hope we would revisit this again, you know, five, five years. You know, this could be something that now that we've got the baseline, we can now make some really good, sound financial decisions moving forward in the future based on the document that's before you. We believe we've incorporated the changes that were identified at our, at our last work session into the document. And so with that, like I said, I know you've seen this a couple of times and be happy to answer any questions that you may have concerning the proposed draft.
One of the questions I guess I have is, in terms of the public process, especially for End of the Oregon Trail and the swimming pool, what is the process before the public process? And what I mean by that is, public process is very directed. And as we've seen in other projects, when you only give so many solutions or so many choices for the public to process in, the outcome is whatever we gave them. So I hope there's some sort of pre-process. And I don't know what format that's in, whether it's, you know, it's essentially a brainstorming session with, you know, whether it be the commission or Parks and Rec Advisory Commission or all the, any of these groups. What is that process so that we, when we go out to the public process, that we have kind of have a start with, these are the possibilities of this? So that we're not leaving out possibilities that somehow get caught later and we said, oh, well, we already did the public process and this is where we ended up. I just remember vividly when we were so excited about the pre, the pre-planning and the public process for the River Walk before the mill was even purchased. And we thought, oh, this is gonna be great. In the first public session, they're like, you know, people are like, oh, we want access to, you know, above the falls to the site. And PG is like, well, that's not gonna happen. So that was never an option. It's like, well, that's not gonna happen. and PG is like, well, that's not gonna happen, so that was never an option, it's like, well, why, what was the point of, you know, creating a plan to access that site from the water if that was never gonna happen, so with the pub, when some of that public process starts, certain things that the public wanted had already been eliminated, um, and I think we've seen that in public processes before, so I, I'd like to see some, you know, how, how do we go through that public process, make it open so that, you know, everything's on the table, people really know what we're talking about, I think especially in the case of the pool and, and the interpretive center, but that's not a question that needs to be answered tonight, I just wanna make sure the public really gets all angles of it, uh, and not just the piece that we choose to give them, um.
We're not, we're not adopting this yet.
No, well, we, we might.
Right, I think, and I think in the, in the plan, it talks about doing a master plan, right?
Yeah.
And I think that's where you're getting to, is once we begin that process, being very deliberative, and like when you talk about the River Walk, I mean, it was a very, um, open deliberative process of taking input, and, right? That, that really, I mean, for a project that big had, you know, I mean, there were some sideboards, but they were very, very wide.
There's other projects, I can list examples, but I chose not to, um, but
Right.
I, I just, I, I just, I, I just wanna say, you know, that, that's simply that, what is the process before we get into public process, so that the public sees everything and really has a, a full, um, image of what their choices are?
Mm-hmm.
The other thing I noticed here was, just one little bit, the, and now that I've reread it, is the, in terms of the Buena Vista Houses, the, the Parks Foundation is paying for, or has stepped up to say they wanna do a feasibility study, that's not the city?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought it was a little bit of both, that was, that was my understanding. Now, I've had a conversation with the consultant, wants to sit down and get all the files that the group has.
Okay.
I said, well, we can make that happen, they can make
So, so our understanding was that the Parks Foundation, or the, uh, A Group was raising money to do a feasibility study.
Okay.
Now, whether the city puts money into that, as of right now, the, the answer is no.
Okay.
Because I haven't been directed to do that, and that may be a discussion that comes up, I don't think it says it can't happen, it's just, I think where we ended up, it felt like on this one topic, this was kinda where we were, we were at, um.
Okay.
Yeah, we need
I reread it, so I, I, I think I feel a little bit better now.
Yeah.
My first three, I mean, there's some of us that, you know, could care less about that building, and some of us do care about that building, and as far as I'm concerned, as long as it sits there, it still exists, um, but I don't think there's any reason, um, and I kinda felt this way when we did feasibility about the Carnegie Center, it's our building, we can figure out what to do with it, we know all the options, just like we knew what the options were for the library, and paying someone to tell us what the options are, when we already know them, um, is, is kind of a waste of money, not saying that, you know, well, if it's Parks Foundation money and they wanna do it, I guess they can do that, and we might get some, some, some better ideas, I, I, if the city was funding it, I'd be a little concerned, because I pretty much know what the feasibility study would come back, and it'd say tear the building down, and I'm not gonna pay for a feasibility study to say that, um, so, um, I, I think, you know, if there's a group that wants to look at the possibilities of it, and they wanna push for it on, I think that's fine, um, and maybe we'll, maybe we'll get some outside of the box idea.
Yeah, well, I think one of the things is that, um, I'm not ready to adopt it tonight, primarily because I've not finished reading it, I just got back and I started on it, and, uh, I will tell you, when you have jet lag, this can put you to sleep, but that's, you know, it's not because the study is boring, it's because I have jet lag, so, um, I'd like to finish reading it, uh, I've, I've got some things marked up that I have questions about, but I'm not, I'm, I don't feel it's appropriate for me to share all, I just wanna, I wanna get through the whole thing, it's, it's very comprehensive, um, I think that it was very thorough, but one of the things to your comment about public outreach, I, I guess I would like to see us schedule at the library, some type of an open house, that we bring the public in, we announce it and say, we finally have a facilities plan, here are the things we're looking at, do you have any comments about it? I would feel a lot better about that, um. I, I totally support it, I've been asking for this for a number of years, before I became a commissioner and the mayor, and when I was staff, why don't we have one? And this is, to me, a step in the right direction, it is what we've needed all along, it allows us to plan for the future, and I'm glad we finally put it into the, to the, to the mix to get this thing done, um. So I, I appreciate the fact that we actually committed to do this, because it was, you know, it was needed, and I think it will put to rest some of the concerns, so I had a citizen contact me yesterday and ask me about when the bond for the Public Works Facility was gonna be paid off, and I said, what are you talking about? It was not financed through a utility fee or bonding or anything of that sort, I said it was financed primarily through savings from the, from Public Works, starting well before Nancy Crash Hour came, Rick McClung started putting away money, and I said, so they've been planning for this for a very long time, so I said, I don't know where that rumor got started, but I put the kibosh on that right away. So it's stuff like that, that, out there, people like, you know, what are we doing? And, you know, somebody asked me a question about a month ago about the library, and, you know, was it paid off, and I, I don't know where these things get started, but anyway, we can, I think it would also give people a better idea of the scope, what we actually have, people don't know, and we have a variety of facilities that provide services to make their lives better, and I think we need to tell them, this is what we have, this is, these are our assets, and I don't think people know.
Well, and not only that, what we've accomplished
Yes, exactly.
From that, you know, to how we got there, what the, you know, where
Right here.
Why is this being driven, yeah.
So, I, I think if, that we can make that happen before the end of fiscal year, that would be fantastic, and we can move forward.
Is there consent, can I get direction on holding a public meeting, I mean, I mean, essentially, it's not in the scope, we can do it, um, having a public meeting about the facilities plan, uh, at the library, if I can get some direction there, um, I'd appreciate that.
I think that sounds like a good idea, we might get some ideas that are a little out of the box. I've got some comments, if I, if I may.
Go for it.
Okay.
I'm signing my life away here on these, on these resolutions.
What Commissioner Smith was saying, um, it reminded me, and I, I wanna say it was at least 10 years ago, and I believe it was a Doka-driven event, we were in the meeting room at the library, and there were big tables set up with a giant map of downtown, and basically it was, one, two, three, go, what do you wanna see? And I think that's what you're talking about, because those, those two facilities in particular, the End of the Oregon Trail and, and the pool, could, I mean, there, it, it could be any number of things, not just improving what they are, but things that we probably haven't even thought of.
Sure.
So I think that would, those, that would be, that kind of a real whiteboard, wide-open session, I, I think would be good. Um, I have a few things, I'd like to go, just go through item by item, um,
Okay.
On this, on the, I'll just go right in order, on the swimming pool, in the, uh, public input process, it talks about aquatic surfaces, I think it should also somewhere in there say, and/or a potential rec center? Along the lines of what Lake Oswego is doing, I don't know if that's something that would come out of a public process, but I think it's something that we should consider, so I'd like to see that in there. Um, on, under Mountain View Cemetery, between the last version and this version, um, the disposition of the house dropped off, and that's something that we still need to decide about. Right?
The disposition of
The old house.
Oh, Buena Vista?
No.
Oh.
The house at the cemetery.
The one that's currently
Oh, 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 the one that's kind of in the middle?
Yeah, right, the one that's being used, it's
And talking to people about their burials, yeah, that one.
The, the previous version of this specifically called out the disposition of that house.
Okay.
This doesn't. Uh, and then just a question on, on Pioneer Community Center, uh, ADA Restrooms, my understanding, that says, um, high priority, but, but my understanding of that, was that's already in process?
I'm, I'll need to get back to you on that.
Yeah, that's
I know, I know we did, I know we did, we received some funding, um, for some, you know, we did the kitchen, um, let me, let me get back to you
Okay.
On what funding we have.
Okay, that just might, the color, color coding just might need to be updated on that. Um, then going back, um, Engineering and Operations Center. On the midterm, boy, where's my glasses, uh, says create a master plan for what, what should shift to New City Hall, and I really want that to say possible New City Hall, because that's not a sure thing. Um, on the elevator, the construction project on the elevator, where it talks about replacing windows and frames, replacing the, uh, display surrounds, please mention lighting in there also, the lighting particularly in that, in the tunnel portion on the lower level is horrible. Um, uh, under the library, on the long term, it says from McLaughlin location. I assume it's talking about the current library location, but it's not McLaughlin. Yeah, uh, maybe that's what it means, I don't know, I was just confused by that. Just a couple more.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's, it's, yeah, it's a little, it's, it's meant to say
There's the things like that
That facility.
That facility, yeah.
Right, okay.
Okay, maybe just not call it that. Um, under City Hall, construction project to improve security, um, and larger meeting rooms, and that got me started thinking that we need to be, we need to look at meeting rooms in general, 'cause it's kinda like we've got a whole bunch of meeting rooms pretty close to all the same size, we've got the one across the parking lot here, this one's a little bigger, we've got the one in City Hall, we've got the one at the library, but we don't, we don't have a, a bigger one, and we, we don't have small ones.
Right.
You know, we have the, the ballroom at the Pioneer Center is kind of, so I think we just need to look at all of our meeting rooms and, and how we can serve different-sized groups.
Okay.
Um, that was it. But I agree with the mayor, I think we probably need to take another look at this. And I'm, I'm not ready to adopt it tonight. Oh, I, I will say one more thing, that concerned me, and it's part of a bigger concern, there's 17 different facilities listed on here, seven of them say, do a master plan.
Do a master plan.
I'm, I'm getting tired of master plans and consultants, you know, and I know there are times when we don't have the expertise to do it in-house, but we do have, we have a professional, a great professional staff, we've got a ton of capability and experience in the community, and sometimes I think we are master planning ourselves to death and not implementing, so that's it.
Do we have a consensus? Yes, go ahead.
Um, so since it looks like this will be coming back to us potentially with more, um, I just wanted to get one little thing and then, uh, uh, save the substance for later, I, I just wanted to note that, um, Henrissi is misspelled a couple of times, the R is replaced with a C, so, um, I'll save my substantive comments till after, uh, a more public process, but a question on that, if we were to move forward with that, is that going to include or require any sort of changes on, with our contract with Scott Edwards Architecture, um, an expansion, extension of, of their services?
Yeah, we did, yes, we did not anticipate nor fund for a public involvement process as part of that, so we would have to go back and kinda look at that, you know, if it's one open house that says, here's the plan, you know, depending on what comes out of that, you know, if there's significant changes from what is in this plan, right, I, I would think we would then bring that back to the commission to provide direction on, you know, Facility A says this currently, here's some of the comments we received, you wanna change that, right? I mean, at the end of the day, we're gonna bring it to you to make that decision. And I think, you know, I think part of it would also be getting back to Commissioner Smith, I mean, we would, Commissioner Smith's, I, you know, this isn't a wide-open, let's go put a building here, right? I mean, I don't think that was the intent of this, it was a baseline study of existing conditions, identifying your low, medium, and high properties of concern, and, you know, what needs to happen in the near, middle, and long term to keep these facilities, you know, functioning for as long as we can, right? So it's, it's very operational in nature versus aspirational, I think that's why these master plans have been identified, is to go through that public process of having that discussion with the community about the condition of our pool, right? Here's why we're doing this process, is because it was built in 1950, whatever, right? And, you know, it needs to be significantly invested in, and is that at this site? Is it a new site? If it's at a new site, where? You know, and what is that, right? Is it, uh, a single pool that serves our community? Is it a, uh, you know, what, what we're more seeing in terms of a recreational, so I mean, that wasn't this process, so that's why I'm a little nervous of, this isn't come tell us everything you want over the next 20 years, it's tell us what to do with what we have right now, right? And that's why those master planning projects are in there, is to incorporate that public process on some of these larger facilities.
Yeah, I was talking more, or about that open piece with, you know, especially the two, the pool and the End of the Oregon Trail, because those are the ones that, you know, we are gonna say, is it gonna go here, is it gonna go there, is it gonna be this, is it gonna be that? That, I guess I wanna find a way that all those possible solutions are out there on the table, because there is a lot of possibilities with any of those sites. Um, it, it's, it's daunting, um, and I think that, you know, we have this challenge so much where everything overlaps, right?
Yeah.
And, and how you do a public process with everyone not knowing all of those overlaps, like, right? And then they say, okay, well, we wanna build this pool up here, it's gonna look like that, and then we say, well, what are we gonna do with the interpretive center, was that, you know, and the concerts and, and these other parks, how do those work together? Oh, well, never thought of that. That all has to be out there for people to understand it, the, the overlaps, so, um, and that's hard to do, do you start with the pool first, do you start with the End of the Trail, do you start with them both, do you kinda go out there and say, well, you know, these are the things that we're thinking, these are the things that everyone's thinking, and, and so it's kinda all out there, um, 'cause every time I think about it more, I think of a different solution or possibility, or how to market, or how to get this community to support on, you know,
Mm-hmm.
Turning the End of the Oregon Trail into whatever it's gonna become next.
Right.
And, and I mean, it'll always be, be the End of the Oregon Trail, but is, you know, that a, more of a concert space, because we know that that's what the public is seeing as event space? I, I, I don't know, um.
Yeah.
Tackling that public process, I think it's gonna be, you know, how, how we do that is gonna be difficult, and, and I'm open to any of those processes, kinda like the one you mentioned, as long as it doesn't involve sticking circled dots, colored dots.
We will not do that.
Never again, I'm sick of it.
I hate that, that was a planning thing we did, and I was
We do it all the time!
I remember Tony leading one of those, where we had everybody in a big old roll thing.
I know, it's like, okay, why does, everyone gets 100 dots, so it doesn't really matter? Stick 100 dots on this one.
Education loves those sticky dots.
We, we are people stealing those people's dots and adding more dots, it was just ridiculous, okay?
I think Commissioner Smith is right, those, those, those two are different.
Yeah.
Everything else on here, I mean, a reservoir is a reservoir, and this building is, is what it is.
It is what it is.
Yeah, yeah, and most of these are purpose-driven facilities, but there's those two that we do have a whole different challenge.
It is a whole different challenge, and we do have to do some more, I hate to say it, but we do have to do some more facilities master plans, some sub-plans for these things, because it's a bigger, it's a bigger issue than just keeping it maintained. Go ahead.
So to a point that was made by Commissioner Mitchell about how we basically are consulting ourselves to death, like, I guess my, my concern with extending our contract with our consultants to go out and do this extra work is that exact thing. And I think that Commissioner Smith brings up a good concern about those two specific sites. And I guess in my mind, I was all right with the, the public involvement here, because in my mind, the idea that we are possibly going out for a parks bond and doing a lot of other things that are more specifically related to those two very important and iconic sites in Oregon City, in my mind, that's where the public engagement really stands, more so than a 1,000 feet in the air, aerial view of all of our facilities. I, I think that the city manager brings up a good point that this could get to the point where I think people might get the wrong idea of what we're trying to get at, and that in the end, we may, like I said, just be spending more money on consultants, as was raised by Commissioner Mitchell. And so I'm actually, after hearing this conversation go on, I just wanted to say that I'm fine if the mayor wants to read more and we want to do this at a different meeting, but I honestly think that those conversations about the future of those facilities belongs in a more parks-oriented, parks bond, parks funding and financing conversation as opposed to this, and I would much rather see this move forward.
And I think the plan identifies that as the next step.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it acknowledges that we have to have this community discussion about, right? And, and with that is going to come, how do you pay for it discussion, right?
Yeah, and that's, and that's a separate discussion than doing some outreach generally to say, here's what our facilities are, here's what we're doing with regard to these, these are some next steps. That's what I want the public to be aware of, so that we can say, I would feel more comfortable moving this thing down the road to implementation, when I know that we made an effort to say, we're doing an outreach, there's going to be no dots, but we could have, we can have some, we have all these slides, we can do this ourselves, we can set this up in the library and say, come on down, look at this, you know, are you aware that we have? People, they're just unaware.
And I think it's, it's an acknowledgement by the city itself as to, in an agreement as to where we're at today.
Exactly.
Right? It gives us the confidence that we can sell Center Street or repurpose it, you know, if we do A and B.
Yep.
Right? I, to me, it's, like I said, it's a very operational rather than aspirational. It tees up the aspirational discussions, but, yeah.
Right, and that's why I think that the more technical discussions, like, it's gone through us for a reason, as opposed to the facilities that have been highlighted that are aspirational in nature for this community, that do belong on, on a pedestal and that we need to be marketing and advertising that further conversations are to happen. But as it relates to this, again, about a reservoir, about, about this and that, I just don't think that that's necessary.
Okay, all right, so we're going to talk about this some more and move it to our next agenda, and I will get all my comments to staff. All right, any communication?
Sorry, my computer died.
While you're doing that, I just wanted to record it, you know, I have a couple of corrections to the, couple of these documents. So Gary Burke is not the executive director of the Umatilla Tribe, he's the chair of the Board of Trustees, if that's who you want to have sign this. And then my name is spelled wrong on one of them. Okay, it probably autocorrected, which is, it happens to me too, and it's my name, so...
Can't top that, I got nothing else, thank you.
Commissioners? Adam? The C4 Retreat is coming up.
Yes, and if you were at our work session, you would have heard me talk about it.
Well, I was doing.
You can watch it though.
I was doing something else, as you very well know. It's like what I was doing on the seventh at Navy. Oh, that was our first evening in Bath, so yeah, I was, I was getting checked in and went to bed, because I've been flying all night and day. Rocky?
I have nothing.
Okay. Well, I have a couple of things I want to just, I told, told some of you in our, in our dinner meeting, is that I want to announce officially that the If I Were Mayor contest has made their decisions, the Oregon Mayors Association, I don't know who was on the committee, but our first place winner, who was Brittany Gil, Brittany Gil Robles, was the first prize winner in our contest with her poster. She came in second in the state. There were 25 cities that submitted, and there were 43 entries, so I think that's pretty darn good for our first time out. I called her and her mom last night, and they were just absolutely excited and thrilled. And I heard from the principal today, so they're going to, they're going to do something special at Candy Lane for her. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I mentioned earlier about the program, so that program on the Chinese is going to be on May 28th, 2024, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. It's going to be at the Wilsonville Public Library. And if you give me a minute, I'll tell you what the title of it is. It is Chinese and Chinese American History Along the Willamette River. So this ties in with the Willamette Falls and Willamette Falls Landings and Heritage Area Coalition. I'm sure this is probably the report that we commissioned. One of the students, his name is Doug Sams, produced this information, and apparently there's a lot more out there than many of us knew. So again, another way to expand our history and tell the full story that we talked about. And that is all I have for tonight, so being no further, oh, let me do one more thing. Let me thank the library staff. I know that none of you were able to attend, but I attended the entire evening, afternoon celebration for May 4th for Star Wars Day, and I sent Jared an awesome picture I got taken with all the Mandalorians, which was pretty cool. It was, they had over 600 people there, I think it was.
Wow.
700 and something, 763.
Wow.
So it was busy, and I think that the ingenious part was, everybody got to make their own lightsaber and they had a bubble machine, so there wasn't anybody getting whacked inside the library. Which, but there were, there were students who were trying, there were people, you know, waving them around, and we sent everybody outside so they could do the bubbles with their lightsabers, with their bubbles, because, you know, you know how children are, and some of the grownups wanted them, and we had to say, the lightsabers were only for children, and we did not allow any adults to have any. But they did a bang-up job, I was there for two hours and had a great time with the staff. I also participated that same day in the teddy bear parade, and Commissioner Smith, did we ever find out who the winners were? Because they never told us.
No.
So we did some judging.
We all wrote names on papers, and I don't know, yeah.
We didn't hear the end of it, so I will get ahold of, of one of the Lions Club members and find out what happened, and, and maybe we can put that in our, in our update. So that was quite the event. I rode with Commissioner Schrader in, in the car, and we did not throw out candy to people. I just, I kind of have a thing about, you know, you throw it in the street and then all the kids come, and you're driving a car, that just, to me, there's a little disconnect there between the throwing of the candy, but next year, I will try to endeavor to put out a word about people donating teddy bears, because they said, well, where are your teddy bears? Because apparently the backseat of my car was supposed to be filled with teddy bears to give away, and I said, nobody told me that, so I guess I know now. Anyway, thank you so much, everybody. Thank you, staff, for all of your work this week, and we are now officially adjourned.